I'll go in this one first.
Okay, Paul, shall we? Do we need to go in that order or?
It's up to you and Tania's chair.
Sorry, can I cut in here, Geraldine?
You can, John.
I would prefer that we leave the motion in the order with motions in order that we've got them, given that we've got two guests and usually we always bring forward motions that are relevant to any guests that we might have. And I suspect that both of our guests would be interested in the motion number three to be dealt with first. I cannot see that we should be reversing the order of the motions at this point. It would seem to be rude and discourteous to our guests.
Okay, thank you. I think we could just carry on with the motion as it is. Because I think we will be okay for time. I am aware that the planning committee is meeting after this and they've got a long and heavy meeting afterwards. But if that's okay with everybody, I will go on to item three with that motion. Is there anyone against that?
No.
No, okay. Okay, so this motion was sent in by councillor Mike Smith. Is Mike there? Does he want to speak on this? I can't see him on my screen.
Mike, you're muted, Mike.
Hello, Mike, come in.
Yep, sorry, I was on mute for some reason or the other. Which doesn't happen very often. The motion that I put in on behalf of the other councillors named there was an amalgam after considerable discussion and inputs by all six of us. And it's based on a formal form of words that councillor Harvey put together. I think it's self-explanatory, particularly to those of us that have been involved with the DIWJ and had well experienced, can I put it that way? The first meeting that we had. Most working groups are a much smaller and manageable number. And really, everybody on those working groups tends to be very much on side. This motion seeks to change our original motion, which didn't have any numerical limits, to bring it in line. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So.
For formal purposes, chairman, if you need somebody to formally move it, I'm happy to do so.
Okay, that's fine if you can do that. Does anyone? Sorry. Okay, I asked Paul how we go about the voting on this.
Well, the first stage is to debate and decide on whether the motion is agreed or not. And if the motion's agreed, then we'll deal with voting process.
Okay, so have we got anyone seconding that motion?
I can see councillors Ralph and Strain Clark, you can second.
Can't see them at the moment, so. Okay, so.
Could I second it and speak to it just briefly, please? Because just to say that I do support this obviously amendment to my original motion. Back in July, when I originally proposed, you know, the original motion without numbering things, I was envisaging a small core of perhaps three or four councillors and, you know, either that many or more people from the community working towards, you know, a more inclusive Buckingham and one which positively welcomes diversity. I didn't foresee, because I can't see the future, I didn't foresee how many councillors would initially be so opposed to this or how many would now be desperate to join. Some of those who were opposed originally obviously must have changed their minds and seen the value of this group. But thirty really is, as Mike said, far too many to have a useful working group and to actually move forward and to do something constructive. So therefore, I am seconding this motion.
Okay, thank you. Do you want the motion read out?
I don't think so. It's on the paper, isn't it?
Okay, that's fine. So we need to know how many are in favour of this motion.
Hang on, councillor Mahi had a hand up.
Did he?
Sorry. Councillor Cole.
Can't see him. Is it councillor Mahi first?
Yeah, and then.
Can I put an amendment? Can I put an amendment to the motion? Is it the right time to do it, Paul?
If the Chair's happy with that, yes, you can.
Yes, fine.
I mean, having read the motion about achieving constructive partnership with community members, my amendment is that if there isn't a balanced and equal number of representatives from the diverse members of the community of the town, then and is dominated by just one group and only councillors, then the workshop should be dissolved as it could not reach a meaningful and a fair outcome which is beneficial for the people of Buckingham. I just need somebody to second it.
Can I just speak to that?
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Hang on, so in terms of the way that was worded, councillor Mahi, that's not admissible as amendment because an amendment can be to change something within the motion, it can't be to contradict the motion.
I'm not contradicting the motion, I'm just saying.
You are because you're proposing to dissolve the group.
To achieving constructive partnership with community members. I'm saying if you don't have constructive partnership with the community members, then we dissolve the group because it's not going to reach a constructive, as it says, constructive partnership with community members.
What I'm saying is.
So I'm taking the last line from the motion and saying if it can't achieve constructive partnership with the community members and you only have one group and councillors on this workshop, then it's pointless having a workshop.
No, but like I say, because that's recommended to dissolve the group, that's contradicting the motion. So therefore, it's not admissible as an amendment. You can adjust the amendment, but you can't contradict the amendment. So you could add to the amendment to say it must something, but you can't say if this doesn't happen, then the group can't exist. Is that?
Okay, it must have equal representation from the people of the town. Not dominated by councillors and one group.
My question with that would be how it would be actually implemented. So can you explain more about?
But if you're going to have a workshop to achieve something and you don't have a balanced representation, how are you going to achieve it? That was what the whole point of the workshop was. The diversity and inclusion working group, if it's not in inclusion of the people of Buckingham, of all groups, don't forget the 25 Asian businesses in Buckingham, I'm sure they're not aware of this working group. If they're not representative, how can you have a constructive partnership with community members?
Okay, so I'm not arguing with the point you're making. My job is to try and get to an amendment which actually works technically. So. You can make an amendment, it's not going to be helpful to make an amendment that's not implementable. So if it just says to have equal or wider representation, that doesn't. I won't then know what that means or how to make that happen or how to judge if it has happened or not.
Is there any point of having a diversity inclusion workshop if you can't have fair and diverse members from the community of the town? You're not achieving what you set out to do.
But there's nothing in the motion that excludes anybody.
It's not, but it does. It excludes all the rest of the council by saying it should only be six.
There's only councillors it's excluding.
And then they needed to have an equal members from the community. So it's not dominated by just councillors.
Councillor Smith wants to speak.
Just say that councillor Mooreju is waiting to speak. I don't know how long he's been waiting.
So they've been waiting to speak.
Can I just say that first of all, I agree with the principles of what is in the motion and it should be representative of all parts of the community. However, putting a motion forward that basically says you're going to exclude councillors I'm not happy with. Those councillors, if they feel there's too many councillors on it, all they have to do is resign. What we need to do is encourage people from different walks of life to actually join the committee. And we shouldn't go in for an exclusion process, we should go for an encouragement process to try and seek people's views. And what concerns me is if you just pass a motion to say that you don't want X number of councillors on it, you might end up with a committee that's not functionable because not enough members from the town have actually joined it. We need to seek people's opinions and Rebecca's done an excellent job and we need to work with her to try and enhance it. Numbers don't really matter. This is about a quality game. And we need to have the quality of the information coming to us, not just worrying about the numbers on the councillors. As I say, if the councillors are so concerned about how many are counted on it, just resign from the committee and then that solves the problem.
Yeah, well done, Howard.
Councillor Cole wants to speak as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I underline what councillor Mooreju says and councillor Mahi. I mean, I read the motion when we first made it the opposite way, that any Buckingham town councillors wish to join this diversity group, then an equal number of residents should be co-opted or more. I'm told at the moment there's a bit of shortfall on the resident side, residents drawn from the BAME community and their supporters, including from the university. Well, of course, at the moment, the university is still in semi-lockdown, it won't be back to full strength until January and hopefully then there'll be a lot more people. But I voted in favour of the motion back on July the 13th on the grounds that would be open to all councillors. The motion succeeded eight votes to seven. One of those votes is mine and if we'd been told at that time that it was going to be restricted to six councillors, I'd have voted against it and the motion would have fallen. So we're really here on false pretenses. I think it's an attempt to rewrite history, which is quite, quite unacceptable. So, you know, why should councillors who can bring something to the debate be excluded by limit on numbers? It's a debate in which all elected councillors should be taking part on behalf of their constituents. I, for instance, I've had diversity training as a magistrate, so I feel I could bring a lot to the table to these meetings. But I think just to have six people there who might be chosen tonight, I think is totally wrong. If it's not open to all councillors, then it is not being diverse and it is not being inclusive, which is what the working group is all about.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else need to speak?
Councillor Harvey has a hand. Can I just remind Karen, I may have got a hand up. The way council works is once the meeting starts formally, it's only councillors who are allowed to speak.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. That's a shame.
Sorry, you said councillor Harvey?
Councillor Harvey, yeah.
Hi, yeah, for me, this is just pure pragmatism. It's about saying that if all, is it 14 or 15 councillors have currently put themselves forward, that means possibly 14 or 15 members of the community, that means a group of about 30 people. That's, especially as we're doing it online at the moment, that's simply not going to function very well. And it's about saying, come on, guys, can we just be sensible here? Can we just say, let's have half a dozen or so councillors, you know, on the working group and maybe half a dozen or so members of the community to get together and indeed run an inclusive process that will gather data from across the board, from very many of the groups that you mentioned, Andy, and so on. You know, let's embark on a process that is inclusive, but let's keep the working group relatively small and tight. Because if it's too large, it's simply going to be unwieldy and simply won't work. This for me is just about pure pragmatism and about pure process. And it's not about trying to rig anything, it's simply about saying that let's move forward because right now it's going nowhere because of the numbers of people that are on it, it's not going to make sense. And by all means, of course, people can resign. But, I mean, who's going to resign? Who's going to be on it? I mean, in a sense, I mean, how do we determine that? Surely it makes some sense. I mean, if we had a working group of town councillors, we wouldn't have a working group of 15 town councillors because it's more or less the whole council. I think it's just about being purely pragmatic and saying, let's try and restrict the numbers a little bit and then we can then work forward on this. It's simply about that. It's not about rigging anything. It'll still be open to people who want to join the group, but I mean, effectively, if you want to join the group, then join the group positively, wanting to make a difference, to understand what racism there is in the town and what might be done about it by us as the town council, but by other organisations too. It is simply an investigative, I can't get the right word in place, an investigative process. That's what we're talking about. It's not about trying to rig anything or promote anybody or demo anybody. It's pure, pure pragmatics, that's all.
Councillor Trye and councillor Strain Clark have their hands.
Okay, councillor Trye.
Thank you. Again, like others have said before me, I don't have any issue with the working group, but this amendment does seem a little strange. For me, when I read it, that there are six proposals or proposers to the motion and we've got six councillors. And I don't quite understand what the selected on the basis of an evident support and affinity with the purpose of the working group means. I'm not quite sure how us as councillors can understand that evident and support for the working group. So if we are going to agree certain town council members, then what evidence and affinity do we have to prove to be able to be part of that working group? So because of that, I would like to propose an amendment that says, just tweaking the motion so that it says that no more than three of the motion proposers be selected for the working group. Because what we've got here at the moment are six people proposing it and a possible six. They may not be the same, but it could be in the wording of it that we then got six councillors being selected for the working group. And for me, as representing my constituents that have elected me, that could be ousting one of the people that want to be involved in it. Not a member of the public, but an elected member almost of a group of people from the public. So, yeah, so that my proposal is, or amendment, that no more than three of the motion proposers be selected for the working group.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Smith has a hand.
I had my hand up.
Oh, sorry, councillor Strain Clark was before councillor Smith.
All right, councillor Strain Clark.
Yeah, thank you very much. I was going to say, yes, it's sort of a bit unfortunate that it's six people needed to sign this to bring it back to council and give out six people, but that is just a coincidence. Now, you could say that people who brought it back are sort of committed to this group, but it doesn't mean that they're the only people on the council who are at all. And I'm quite happy because, you know, I've got enough contact with the Black Lives Matter group and so on. You know, I don't need to be on this committee if more people want to be on it, you know, then there are the spaces. I'll just say that straight away because I'm not doing it, you know, for my own sake to ensure that I get on a reduced-sized working group. Just that I'd like a reduced-sized working group to be able to go forwards and so something positive might be achieved.
I don't want to be on it either.
We've got councillor Smith, councillor Hirons, I should think, Chair.
Councillor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Just to reiterate really what councillor Strain Clark has just said, the reason that there are six names at the top is because it requires six councillors to bring back a motion or bring a motion in connection with one that was in six months before. That's the only reason that those six names are up there. We're the ones that brought the thing forward. And just as a point of information, if you like, I have already told the town clerk that it is not my intention to serve further on this working group.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hirons was next.
Councillor Hirons.
You're muted, councillor Hirons.
I'm just concerned that it's so undemocratic where it just says that it's going to self-select a group of who these people would be. I think, you know, we're fairly commonly have to make decisions involving who will do something in the council and it's obviously one where we have a little election that people would stand for it. And then we vote for the people we wish to see to represent us on this committee. That is the democratic way of doing it, not a self-selecting way, which is what the way I.
I'm not hearing this, people. No.
Can't hear it.
Can't you hear it?
I can hear. Can anyone else?
Can I? Very well.
I can hear Paul very clearly, yeah.
Yeah, I can hear it.
I can.
Well, if you've heard it, you've heard it.
But I can't see any more hands at the moment. Oh, I take that back, councillor Stutchbury and councillor Newell.
I've listened to the discussion and I've listened to the debate. We're still discussing, the people discussing it are still discussing the motion when an amendment has been paced. The amendment then becomes the motion and then you have to discuss the amendment. What we are falling into the trap of discussing the motion because there was an amendment placed, either supported or not supported, and we're returning to discuss the merits of the motion, which really should be discussing the merits of the amendment. Now, I haven't been on this council some time. I've got respect for everybody on this council. And I don't believe, despite comments and rigor of what people say, that anyone's against progressing this group. So I would suggest that for the sake of clarity, we move forward and take the amendment because once an amendment is in place, it becomes the motion and see where that sets us rather than have a round discussion about this thing, which I don't think is doing any one of us any credit.
Okay, councillor Newell had her hands up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say that we're not self-selecting. 3.2 is where the town council decides who the members of that working group would be. So we're not self-selecting. That was it.
Okay, so can I ask Paul, can we go to that first amendment or is that not?
Well, again, if that's what you wish, councillor Beanfield did have his hand up.
Okay, Terry.
From what I can see, Chair, there's already councillor Smith, Harvey and councillor Christie have already said that they wouldn't be serving on that committee if we wished. So there's only three there anyway, so I can't see the point of the amendment. And there's still three left, which is what councillor Trye wanted.
Yeah.
The amendment is on the table though still.
Yeah, I quite agree, Paul, yes. I was just making that point.
Okay, so shall we move to, there was the first amendment. Does that one still stand?
Do you mean?
Does Andy stand or not?
No, Andy's wasn't seconded.
Right.
So this is councillor Trye's amendment.
The councillor Trye amendment.
That's the one which is an amendment and is was not seconded.
Okay, do you want to repeat that so everybody's clear on what we're voting?
Okay, so it's not changing any of the wording of how the motion is written, just the figures that says no more than three of the motion proposers be selected for the working group.
Okay, thank you. And, sorry, who seconded that?
Me.
Okay, so can we move to the vote on that?
Can we have a recorded vote, please?
Yeah, certainly.
Am I just, can I just say something against the amendment? In that, you know, we talk about being open and and having people free to vote for whatever they like and now we suddenly would be saying we're not, you know, we're going to have three people crossed off this, we're not allowed to stand. Now, I know three of us actually don't want to, but, you know, that's another matter. So I don't really like the amendment, but I see what councillor Trye is getting at.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to speak to the amendment, if that's fine. We've got a motion which is, Madam Mayor, which is adverse to the vast majority of councillors present. We have listened to the debate tonight and there is a vast majority of councillors who may not wish to serve on the group who are already the proposers. The amendment, in its merits, does move the situation on and doesn't preclude any further discussion about this within our standing orders. And as the debate tonight hasn't been a shining example of where we ought to be, the amendment does have some merits if it moves the situation forward and brings the council into some conclusion of how to progress. Because there is two forms of views on this. One is none of, I don't believe any of the councillors are against the movement. I don't believe any of the councillors, whatever, what I do believe is we need to move forward. Now, because I want to move forward and be somewhat adult about this, we need to take all of the council with us and the amendment does do that. And it doesn't leave anyone out. But can I suggest that we leave the selection of this to a further discussion of the meeting? Because as you said at the right meeting, we've got a long meeting after this, an emotion which was not put in on the right order on the agenda and we were assured that it would be a short debate and none of those have become true. So I think we have to consider the merits of the amendment not on the table and it does move us forward and brings councillors to it. Now, if that doesn't work, the council can then return to it.
Yeah, call for the vote, Ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Can we now go to the vote, please?
This is for the amendment.
This is for the amendment, so everyone in.
Councillor Cole.
Sorry, Al, where's Paul? Are we moving on to the vote?
Councillor Cole has his hand up and somebody else has called to move to the vote.
Okay, so which came first?
Well, the call to move to the vote came first.
We need to move to the vote. Okay, so everybody in favour of moving to the vote?
Point of order, ma'am, point of order.
Okay, Mark.
Yeah, I'm still not exactly clear about councillor Trye's amendment that we're about to vote for. Could it just be read out once more, please? I'm now very confused.
Okay, Melton, can you do that for us?
Certainly. So the motion under 3.1 stands as it is. I'm just adding in there that no more than three of the motion proposers be selected for the working group. And as an aside, I think we've already heard that maybe three of them don't wish to go forward anyway. So it's a bit of a moot point, but as councillor Stutchbury says, it does move the motion forward in his.
Yeah, point of order, ma'am.
Okay, councillor Cole.
I find this motion undemocratic because it's assuming that one of those six, or three of those six, is going to be elected. That is not what this is about. Item 3.2 is to agree town council members of the working group. You can't have a motion saying three of the people who propose this motion will automatically be on it. The people who are going to be on it have got to be selected by the council, properly elected after all those members have put their reasons for why they want to be on it. So I don't think the motion is legal as it stands. Town clerk?
What I understood the motion to be was that no more than three.
Correct.
So it wasn't specifying that three must be included. It just said, so within the motion, it could be zero, one, two or three.
Yeah.
But it's not stipulating any of them will definitely be members.
Correct.
Are you happy with that, Mark?
I'll take it as it is, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Councillor Ralph wants to say something.
Can we just go to the vote, please?
Councillor Ralph has not spoken and we did take councillor. The councillor Ralph has not spoken and we did take councillor-
I did call for the vote, like councillor Stutchbury.
I know. I just would like to hear what councillor Ralph has to say because if you took one person, I'm quite happy to go to the vote at any point, but I'm interested in what he says. He did not speak in the debate.
It doesn't make any difference. The chairman's decision is final, whether a councillor has spoken or not. So if Geraldine is called for the vote, unfortunately, that's how it stands unless she's willing to change her mind.
Yeah, I think we have to go to the vote because that's what everyone wanted.
Please.
Okay. Yep. Can we have a show of hands on everyone who's voting for the motion?
This is a recorded vote.
A recorded vote.
For the motion. So I see councillor Stutchbury.
No, can I just speak? We-
We can't speak, Robin. We've called for the vote.
Councillor Collins said he wanted to have a vote on whether to have the recorded vote and you totally ignored him.
We didn't-
I just clarify, are we voting on the amendment to the motion?
Yeah, so we are voting, we are voting on the amendment to the motion. A councillor has called for a recorded vote. There doesn't need to be a vote about that. If a councillor requests a recorded vote, then there will be a recorded vote.
Correct.
Okay, everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so voting on the amendment, so everyone in favor of the amendment?
Right, councillor Tri, councillor Mahi, councillor Hyrens, councillor O'Donoghue, councillor P Collins, councillor G Collins, councillor Cole.
And anyone against?
Against have councillor Newell, councillor Gaetley, councillor Bloomfield, councillor Harvey. Everybody?
No, strange clock.
And councillor Strain Clark.
Okay.
Make that five against. Oh, so councillor Ahmed against as well, is that? That's councillor, that's six against.
Okay, so we have six against and-
Nina, how many was that for?
That's 12 voted. So there are five abstentions.
Eight in favor.
Eight in favor, six against. And abstentions, just to be clear.
Any abstentions?
Councillor Stutchbury, councillor Ralph.
Councillor Stutchbury, Dodi voted in favor.
I have not voted. I wish to speak and-
I called out your name in favor, Robin.
Did you? Well, you called it out incorrectly. I said I wish to speak and you said, then councillor Maud, you said we couldn't speak and then you recorded it as a vote.
Right, can we vote again then, please? So we've got this really clear. Sorry, everybody.
Okay, so for the amendment, everybody for the amendment.
Councillor Tri, G Collins, Mahi, Cole, O'Donoghue, Hyrens, P Collins. That is seven people for the motion.
Okay, and anyone against?
Councillor Strain Clark, Newell, Gaetley, Bloomfield, Harvey, Ahmed. That is six people against the motion.
And abstentions?
Councillor Stutchbury, Ralph and Maudy. So the motion is carried by one vote.
Okay, thank you.
So now we go to vote on the revised motion, which is what we've just agreed.
So just that makes 16 people. Are there only 16 of us here? Who are we missing? Seven, six and three adds up to 16.
I can't see councillor Smith. Can anyone else see him?
No.
He was here.
Where is he? I can't see him at all.
He's left the meeting by the looks of it.
Oh, yeah, he's not here.
Which explains the numbers.
Right.
Okay, so we move to the actual motion then.
Substantive motion.
Substantive motion, thank you. Councillor Smith, I think, is rejoining the room.
Can we check whether councillor Smith meant to vote?
Well, he wasn't here.
No, he's not allowed now.
Yeah, so.
So we move on to the substantive motion, which is, anybody want to have that read again?
No, it's written down, so.
It is written down, you're right. So-
Can I just check, councillor Smith, are you clear that the substantive, that motion, the amendment was agreed? So we're now voting on a substantive motion which includes councillor Tri's amendment.
I have no idea what's been going on for the last five minutes. The whole thing-
Yeah, we lost you.
Just got back in.
Okay, can we just, so read out the amended motion that's now been agreed. So councillor Smith understands what he's voting for, please.
If you could, please.
Would you like me to do it?
Okay.
Yeah, so the motion stands as it is under 3.1 on the agenda with the addition that no more than three of the motion proposers be selected for the working group. No more than three of the motion proposers be selected for the working group.
Okay. Thank you, I understand that. That's been agreed, has it?
No, well, it's been, it's been agreed to amend the motion, but we're about to actually vote on the motion as amended.
Right.
Okay, does anyone need to go through that motion again? No, it's written down. Okay, so everyone in favor of that motion?
So I've got councillor Strain Clark, Newell, Gaetley, Ralph, Cole, Bloomfield, Harvey, Hyrens, Maudy, Ahmed and Smith. I make that 11.
And anyone against?
Against, I can see councillors Tri, G Collins, Mahi, P Collins. That's four.
And any abstentions?
I can see councillor O'Donoghue. Just the one.
Just the one, okay.
Right, so that motion is carried.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we're all clear on that?
So now it's 3.2.
Right, so 3.2 is to agree the members of the working group, town council members of the working group.
Chairman.
Councillor Mahi.
I propose councillor Mark Cole to be on the working group.
So can I just clarify the process we're in here before we get into nominating people?
Yes.
The best way I'm aware of to do this is we'll take all the, everybody who is nominated and then we'll go through the nominees one at a time until we get up to six. Obviously, once we've got three of those who were, put themselves on their names against the motion, then there'll be three others available too. So far I've got a nomination to councillor Cole. And we're taking seconds for nominations, Chair?
Yeah. Should do a second.
I'll second Mark.
Please, a second Mark.
I'd like to propose councillor Mahi.
I'll second that.
I'm raising a point of order, Madam Chairman.
Okay, councillor Cole.
The motion says we recommend that no more than six councillors are needed and should be selected on the basis of an evident support and affinity with the purpose of the working group. We cannot elect anybody until we have heard from them what the basis of an evident support and affinity to the working group is. So we need statements from everybody who's being selected tonight, which I imagine is going to take a good hour from now. So would the council, would the council wish to proceed with this or delay this until a more suitable time?
I move, I move to the next item then, in that case, because we really do need to move on.
I'll second that.
That's seconded by Paul.
Okay, then we have a vote on the moving next item then, please.
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody in favor of moving next item?
No, I'm not, but go on.
I'm going to call out names just to make sure that I'm getting it, I'm not missing anyone. So in favor, we've got councillor Tri, G Collins, Mahi, Bloomfield, Hyrens, P Collins and Ahmed. I make that seven.
And me.
And O'Donoghue, make that eight.
Anyone against?
Against have councillor Newell, Ralph, Harvey. Make that three.
And abstentions?
Councillor Strain Clark, Gaetley, Stutchbury, Maudy. I make that four. So motion carried, we move on to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, then we need to work out how they get their statements to you, Paul, and go from there.
Yeah, I'll email the proposed approach to councillors in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, thanks. So we shall move on to item four, the motion from councillor Stutchbury. Where is he?
I'm still here, just, just about, yeah. Yeah, well, obviously, in hindsight, I'd rather have had this motion discussed first, but as it was put in, and I think-
I did try, Robin.
It just demonstrates why it should have been. But this is hopefully something we will be on more agreement with, I real hope. When putting this, it may be, you're evidently aware of the government's white paper on planning. You have either read or seen the discussions. The planning committee discussed this in some length, the motion which was put to the planning committee at the last planning meeting and the planning committee made a recommendation to yourselves to agree this motion here tonight. This is probably going to be one of the biggest things and changes to the way that we engage in local planning as a lower tier authority, let alone Buckinghamshire council. So therefore, I put the motion to you that Buckingham Town Council wishes to express its deep alarm and concern with the implementation of the wholesale changes to the current planning system proposed by the government, White Paper, Planning for Futures, which reduces or removes the influence of Buckinghamshire Council, town and parish councils, as well as members of the community on future applications. The effects of the new regime is likely to impact strongly on the environment, on the economy and prospectively, as well as social wellbeing of Buckinghamshire. Furthermore, it could see the end of local planning, local plans and residents having the ability to influence large developments. Removal of a layer of democratic governance undermines the accountability within the planning of our community future. And so Buckingham Town Council seeks assurances from Buckinghamshire Council that they will be voicing their objections to the planning white pa, draft of the planning white paper about the content and scope of the processed bill. When I say the content scope, it's a wide-reaching bill. In addition, Buckingham Town Council presses Greg Smith, our local MP, to raise questions on the matter and challenge the detail in Parliament. Finally, Buckingham Town Council will write to the Secretary of State restating our concerns, noting at the head of the motion, as I stated at the beginning of this, this is probably going to be one of the biggest changes since 1948 and the 1960s legislation, followed by the 1990s and the 1991 Planning Act. All of those were amendments and improvements to local planning. This is the end of local planning and top-down governance. And I'd be interested to see and know the views of my fellow councillors.
And I'm happy to second the motion again.
Thank you.
I can see councillors Tri, Mahi, Harvey and Cole.
Okay, councillor Tri.
Thank you. I totally agree and wholeheartedly support councillor Stutchbury's motion. I would only say that maybe in the second paragraph, the word voicing is not strong enough to, to a motion that really we need to make sure that they are presenting or writing their objections rather than just voicing them. And I'm assuming that Buckinghamshire Council is really the unitary council. Apart from that, I'm in love with the motion.
Thank you. Sorry, who is next?
It was councillor Mahi, I saw that.
Councillor Mahi.
You're muted, councillor.
Councillor Mahi.
You're all muted.
You're still muted.
Okay. I totally agree with councillor Stutchbury's motion and if we do not object to everything that, that is what the government is trying to do, we are on a slippery slope to developers just building everywhere, even on green, green land. So yes, we must fight this coming forth, yeah. I agree with, I agree with Robin.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Harvey.
Councillor Harvey.
I move we go to a vote because we're all in agreement about this and we've got a long meeting ahead of us. So let's, let's vote on this now, let's make it a recorded vote.
I second that.
I technically have the right to reply, standing orders, and then we can move to the vote.
Okay, carry on, Robin.
Councillor Cole did have a hand.
Sorry, councillor Cole.
Well, I'm willing to hear councillor Cole.
May I speak, Mayor?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. Yes, I wholeheartedly support councillor Stutchbury, but like councillor Tri, I'd like to see just one change in the first line. Buckingham Town Council expresses its deep alarm, not wishes to. It's not strong enough, if that's acceptable. I spent-
I accept that.
Thank you. I spent three days going through these, these papers. Firstly, thanks to Roger Newell of the Buckingham Society for his expert guidance on planning the future white paper. As he points out, some of it is commendable, but much of it runs contrary to what is democratic and affordable. We've got a double problem here in Buckingham. Firstly, we're beholden to the new Shire Council, which does not appear to consider that Buckingham Town Council, or indeed any of the northern parishes, should continue to have a voice.
Mark, you're muted.
How much have you heard?
Continue to have a voice.
That's perfect. I've got a voice again. Assuming we can persuade Buckinghamshire Council to give us back our voice. Secondly, we need to challenge the Prime Minister and his Secretary of State for Housing, Communities and Local Government on their pie in the sky vision for the future of English planning. It won't work. What this white paper proposes is that even more of the local planning process be swept away with the possible scrapping of neighbourhood development plans and only an initial consultation on any plans, no follow-through, even where there's complex local matters. Throughout England, town and parish councils have planning committees, just as ours, formed of members who may not be planning professionals, but by whom, same token, are not amateurs. We've been elected by our constituents to speak on their and the community's planning issues. Here in Buckingham, we're fortunate. We've been trained and advised by professionals such as Catherine, Sheena and Roger. We've got local knowledge. Many of us have attended enough inquiries, appeals and strategic planning meetings to understand how it all works. And I'd remind members, we're one of the first communities in England to have a made neighbourhood development plan, something which the government strongly urged all communities to do. Now, the white paper suggests abolishing them all and let central government take control. The Prime Minister and his housing- The Prime Minister and his Housing Ministers' biggest misconception is that current planning law, enshrined in 1947 Town and Country Planning Act and its various amendments, is not fit for purpose, as they want to see 300,000 new homes built every year. The fact that planning permissions are already being given for 1 million new dwellings in England yet to be built because developers are land banking in the hopes the values will rise. Build those and the housing shortage disappears. Mr Johnson and Mr Jenrick should be targeting developers who have not yet built those houses, not the local planning authorities, which they can be out of date with their plans and technology, but show little enthusiasm to force those developers to do it or lose it. And I've also got grave reservations about the abolition of local planning levies, such as section 106 and the Community Infrastructure Levy, to be replaced by a quote nationally set value-based flat rate charge. As Roger points out, this could be used by local authorities to reduce their council tax or to spend on non-planning related projects. It's essential that any new development continues to pay for related infrastructures within the community it's situated. We also need to be aware of the government's knee-jerk reaction to empty town centre shops, replacing them with low-quality homes. Mr Johnson, when Mayor of London in 2010, fought for a minimum new home space of less, no less than 37 square metres. It's now deemed acceptable, can be as little as 15 square metres, thanks to permitted development right loopholes. There's many things I could pick up on, I'm not going to continue, but I'll close with the contentious issue of what a beautiful building is. Proposal 14 seeks to fast-track beauty, updating the national planning policy framework to make clear schemes complying with local design guides and codes will be given a positive advantage, all well and good, so long as those local design codes are those of the Buckingham neighbourhood plan and not something which Buckinghamshire Council or the government forces on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Hello, I will, I will speak now with the mayor's permission. I'm very grateful for what councillor Cole said, because listening to councillor Cole was really important, because he expressed many of the aspects which I won't need to say now, and it makes a change for me. But I will say what I've done so far in this, I have, I have, I've took up an interview previously on this with three counties. I have been to Buckinghamshire County, Buckinghamshire Council's Cabinet and questioned them, and at this point, they are not determined what their view is. I shall, furthermore from this, there will be a motion going to the next council of Buckinghamshire Council, which has been placed well in advance of me going to Cabinet. That's because I have a duty to all of you to make sure these points are heard in that council. But I am hoping tonight that we will agree this and show a form of unity about this issue, because as I said earlier in this evening, I believe that all of us councillors wish to do the best for Buckingham and represent Buckingham. And I'm grateful for the kind words which have been said and the support to the motion, and especially my secondary who has chose not to speak because she's got a planning meeting to chair afterwards and is probably quite disturbed about how she's going to get through that agenda after this evening. But I hope we move this forward and I hope it's agreed unanimously. And I ask for a press release after this and a recorded vote.
Okay, thank you, Robin. So can we move to the vote now on this motion?
Yes. There was an amendment, Chairman, there was an amendment to the wording.
Okay.
I, I, I agreed the amendment.
You agree?
I'm happy to second still.
Yeah.
We still need to vote, we still need to vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion.
All right. Everyone in favour of the amendment?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. Oh, sorry, it's recorded on, okay.
Yeah.
And so this is just the amendment, it's not the actual motion though. So councillor Tri, councillor G Collins, Stutchbury, Strain, Clark, Newell, Gately, Ralph, Mahi, Cole, Bloomfield, Harvey, Hirons, Mordu, Smith, O'Donoghue and Ahmed, I make that 16 for?
Anyone against?
One against councillor P Collins.
Oh, okay. Okay, so everyone in favour of the original motion?
Of the, no, the substantive motion.
Substantive motion.
So this is again is a recorded vote, so councillor Tri, G Collins, Stutchbury, Strain, Clark, Newell, Gately, Ralph, Mahi, Cole, Bloomfield, Harvey, Hirons, Mordu, Smith, O'Donoghue and Ahmed.
And anyone against?
Councillor P Collins.
Okay, and no abstentions? No, any abstentions? No. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
And, and that includes the press release after the meeting, which was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we shall move on to item five, the Buckingham Town Centre Public Spaces Protection Order.
Chair, can I briefly say, just point out councillors, firstly, this is on the agenda because there's a timescale for the consultation, otherwise it would have gone to the next full council meeting. And the proposal essentially is to keep the Public Space Protection Order exactly as it currently is. So at the moment, the order is that people can be instructed to stop drinking within the town if required by the police. It would be possible for us to request to broaden the boundary beyond the town centre if we wanted to, or to reduce that, or to add things to it. There's quite a tight timescale, obviously, on them getting this in. Certainly for our events, it would be disappointing if it was totally taken away, because it's helpful to have it there, but that's the only impact I can think of on us. I can see councillors Smith and Stutchbury.
Okay, councillor Smith?
Thank you. The, I, I see no reason to change the arrangements that have been in place for a number of years, they've worked pretty well, inasmuch as they haven't had to be used that often, if at all. So I, I, I think that rather than try and tweak the boundary of it or add bits and take this out and that sort of thing, we, we just as a council support keeping things as they are.
I'll second that.
Okay, and there's councillor Tri, did you say?
There's councillor Stutchbury and councillor Harvey now.
Okay, councillor Stutchbury?
When I, along with some other members, I was on the council when this originally was put in place. Though I'm happy and I'm totally grateful the town clerk reassures me there's no changes in this piece of paperwork from the previous piece of legislation and local law we had, but I haven't got that with me to compare, which is probably because it's probably not available. But as long as the town clerk assures me that this isn't going to interfere with our calendar events whenever we can do one again, I'm happy that we do it. And I, and I don't think we should seek to broaden the scope of it, because that discussion will be with other people outside Buckingham who may not share the same views of Buckingham that we do presently. So I think we best neatly tuck this one away.
Okay, was there someone else?
Councillor Harvey.
Councillor Harvey?
Yeah, I would like to speak against the continuation of it for two reasons really. One is, I think Thames Valley Police have not furnished us with any data on how many times they've used this and to what effect. And therefore, we're actually flying completely blind to give a response to this. I think we should say very clearly whether or not this, you know, whether or not the, the current mood of the meeting perhaps is to kind of sustain it. If that is indeed the case, I still think we should ask Thames Valley Police for information next time. They want a town council like us to agree to something, then the very least they can do is furnish us with the data on which we can make, make an evidence-based decision. Secondly, I would actually argue against this right now, because in times when COVID-19 is still raging, a raging pandemic and looks like the number of cases are going up, the evidence seems to be emerging, and I'm not an expert, of course, is that it's very difficult to actually catch the virus in the open air. It's much easier to catch the virus in, in enclosed circumstances. Now, as winter approaches, sadly, of course, more people are going to be inside. But I think if we're, if we're thinking about public health, then actually maybe we should be allowing people the facility, if they wish, to go and drink their drinks outside, outside pubs, on the basis that that might be a healthier place to ever have a drink and socialise with people that we, that all of us would like, like us to, people to carry on doing. So I'm profoundly against it, because I think if someone's drunk and disorderly or in need of some sort of police presence, there are probably a thousand other laws that the police can use to either arrest that person or take a drink off that person, it doesn't need this kind of order in order, in order to do that. So I would appeal to my fellow councillors that we say, no, we don't need it right now on the grounds of public health, and secondly, on the grounds that we weren't given any information on which to base the information, on which to base our decision.
Councillor O'Donoghue has a hand.
Okay, councillor O'Donoghue.
And councillor Stutchbury.
Thank you, Chairman. There's been a bit of talk about enlarging the area, but it is encompassing the whole of everything inside the Ring Road, which is quite a lot of Buckingham. The only bit it's really missed in is Lockmead Farm, Page Hill and the new estate on Tindric Road and Embolton. I mean, there's quite a lot that's already enclosed in this area, like the town plus a lot more. So just to consider, it's not just the town centre here, it's also the estates.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stutchbury?
Originally, when this piece came through, a name that you may not recognise, some of you being a councillor, was councillor Lehman, when he was councillor, who fought strongly to maintain that Buckingham was treated differently to Aylesbury in this in. The town clerk, he's assured me that this isn't a change to the current, what we have in place, in which case, deviating from what we have in place situation, I understood it, was the police would not interfere with people drinking unless they were causing a public nuisance and they were causing an affray. Now, that in itself is a large change from Aylesbury, where in Aylesbury you would not be able to even drink in public places. So my concern in not supporting this is we may get a more just fluent discussion of this, and then we may end up being given what Aylesbury's got, and that would then be really detrimental to the organising future events in the town centre. And we have to look beyond COVID, we have to look to the future, because I'm hoping there will be a future beyond COVID. And, and that's why I take the town clerk's advice, that he assures me that it's both in sync and identical to the previous pieces of, of, of legal documents that we have agreed. And as I said, it was councillor Lehman who fought very strong for Buckingham to be treated in a much more friendly way than was Aylesbury.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we've concluded all. Was there anyone else waiting to speak?
I can't see anybody else.
No. Okay, so do we all agree on continuing as it is?
Well, councillor Harvey's spoken against it, so we need to vote.
Yeah, okay, so everyone in favour of continuing as it is?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 in favour.
Okay, anyone against?
One against.
And any abstentions?
That's everybody then.
Okay, thank you.
So that's passed?
That's passed, so we'll move on to item six, any chairman's announcements. I only wanted to say, we're all very sad at hearing of the young boy Dean, I don't know how I'm pronouncing this properly, Mandubova. Sad death of this young boy. I know many people in the town contributed to the crowdfunding page to try and get him treatment in Spain, but sadly, he has passed away. He was a great member of the football club and lots of people in Buckingham know him and his family. And we, I've asked, as Mark Cole and myself have asked, that a letter from the town council be sent to his family, if that's okay with everybody?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, happy with that.
Thank you. So we just need to move on to the date of the next meetings, the next full council is Monday, the 5th of October, and the next interim council is the 22nd of November. And thank you all for being here tonight, I'm sorry it went on a bit longer and you've got the long planning one to go through next. Thank you, everybody.
Can I just say, on the YouTube, on YouTube, I'm just going to stop recording now and then restart again in about 60 seconds, so if you're watching, it will stop and then restart.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does that mean we have to re-log in or?
No, you're, you're fine, Robin.
No, fine, thank you.